Council, it is six P M. I'll call the Sartell City Council Meeting for Monday, March eleventh to order. Please rise for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Council, I'd like to amend our agenda slightly. We will add a special presentation and we will also add item six I to the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Special presentel- uh, special presentation to recognize Mr. Coffin Beetle. As we gather here for the city council meeting, we have an honor and privilege to bid farewell to a true pillar of our city of Sartell team, John Coffin Beetle. John's journey with the city of Sartell began three decades ago and since then, his unwavering commitment, hard work, and dedication have been the bedrock of our public works team. His expertise and genuine passion for serving our community have left an incredible mark on all of us. On behalf of the entire council and the residents of Sartell, I want to thank you, John, again for your hard work, your leadership, and your friendship. We wish you all the best in your well-deserved retirement. May the years ahead be filled with joy, laughter, new adventures. As a token of our appreciation, once we're all done giving remarks, we'll have you come up. Um, I, I want to add on just a little bit of, I am in my, let's see, uh, eighth year, um, of being elected official for Sartell. John's has absolutely been a pillar through all of that. When we think of, uh, of new roads, when we think of reconstruct, when we think of really anything in the city of how it works, why is it done that way? Um, everyone throughout the city has, has leaned in on John to say, hey, give us guidance. Helps you the path forward. There's been many times where, uh, John would, would tell us that that is one heck of a crazy idea, but I'll get the crews to, to work on it and figure out a way. And so for all of that, John, uh, thank you. Thank you so much for just lending a hand. Yeah, and being one that everyone here can count on. Council, any other? Comments?
Yeah, I echo everything Ryan said. Um, when I came on as a new council member, our first front call initiation was John. You get done with that meeting, it's, your reaction is holy color, that man knows a lot about the city. Um, and over my time on council, it's really anything that has to do with public works, we haven't had to worry about because you have under control, so. As Ryan said, congratulations and you will be missed.
I would just echo all those comments and just say, John, you're amazing at what you know about the city. And what I've always appreciated about you is, is how upfront you are on two things. And the first thing would be, hey, that can't work here and this is why. And there was always a reason why, not just a personal opinion, but like this is how it's going to impact the city. Uh, and the second thing you would always say is like, but this is how we can do it. This is what I, what, how I can make it happen. This is what my team can do to make it happen. I know the Pinecone Central Park and Orthopedics Field and all the things that we did out there. The, the number of times you just said, hey, we can do that, we can take care of that. Or we, we'll cover that piece of it to make this actually whole project go. So just your unwavering support, I think you take that through every thing that you've ever done for the city. And it's just been inspiring to, to watch how you work and get a chance to work with you on a few small things. And I hope you enjoy a lot of fishing and, and all those things in retirement and enjoy it. So, uh, thank you for all you've done and, uh, good luck, ma'am.
I would echo all that, John. Um, I think it's been an, uh, absolute privi- privilege serving on city council during your tenure. Um, I've learned so much from you. I would describe, um, you as, just a steward of the community, you know, not only running public works, but you're really doing what's in the best interest of the community and residents at large. If there's a resident in need that needs help with something or direction, you're the first person there and always willing to roll up your sleeves and get things done. And I think that's kind of what we're hearing from all of us is you, you get things done and you get it done the right way. And it's just, it's been very much appreciated. So thank you for your service. We are going to miss you. But onward, put it to better things.
Uh, I would follow up with, with all that wonderful, uh, info. Um, I, I, in my second term here and, and when I came on board, I same echoed what Ryan and Jed had said, kind of the information that you shared with us and, um, got us up to speed on stuff. I didn't know anything really much about public works in regards to what the city was. I was a new resident, but I'm always amazed I'll be out and about, um, either at a, a, a city function somewhere outside of Sartell or just randomly around in the community. And someone will walk up and say, is Beetle still there? And, and I, and I kind of smile and I said, yeah. And it could be an old employee that worked in parks years ago and they always have a great smile on their face. And, you know, have some wonderful things to say about you that are complete stranger, just saying, you know, I worked with him back in whatever, you know, before they had plumbing in town here. Paved streets. Um, but yeah, I appreciate everything you've done and, and moving forward, we've got huge shoes to fill. Um, and I hope you don't go too far because I'm sure your phone's going to ring from us a few times getting some more information from you. So I appreciate everything you've done for us and the city and, uh, happy retirement.
Beetle, I'll invite you up. We have a little, uh, special presentation for you.
Okay. You guys?
Oh, he's on her.
No, let's just wait a little bit.
Where's Carrie?
I know, so you get the B team. Okay, one, two, three. Everyone looks higher. Okay.
Thank you.
I can text him too.
You got a couple weeks yet.
Light goals, light goals.
I got the original old one of these, you know, when the contractors, you know, when they first start off, they don't have signs and they put one on them. Piece of plywood and so I, somebody stole that for my truck one day and I put it up in my chest. Just want to look a little nicer. Again, thank you. Uh, open forum, public comment. We have one register tonight, uh, Peter Wilson. The floor is yours.
Thank you.
If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record.
Certainly. My name is Peter Wilson. I live eleven zero eight Celebration Drive, Sartell, Minnesota, five, six, three, seven, seven. Want to talk on two things really. Uh, first thing is the United Nations. I have spoken a couple of different times on different facets of how this is integrated in what you do, how you operate, and why you do things. I am opposed to it. I am greatly opposed to it. I have been opposed to it since I became aware of it decades ago. This, the intent of this originally in some aspects goes back to the radical environmentalists and their desire to reduce the human population and development of food. It has continued to some degree to that and expanded greatly. How the impacts that here is the sustainability goals you have. I urge all of you in front of me and anyone else who's listening or watching to look into those, where they came from, why they were introduced, and why they continue on. And that included with the welcoming cities, which again, why were they, why was that created? Why was it introduced and why does it carry on? Grain steps. Not here to talk about each one of these. I'm referring to, or, or desiring, pardon me, to have a open forum of a couple of hours and go through these and let those who think they're good make their cases and those who oppose them make their cases. And then if they are bad, which some cities are deleting some of these as they, it becomes apparent of the consequence, I would very much like this to happen here also. Otherwise, there's other ways for me to approach it. I think that is the most gracious. Let those who desire reductions of our families, our peop- the population, control of our individuals, manipulation of our lives and our schools, you can stand up and support it. Those of you who oppose it, like me, can then address it in another way. Lastly, not sure where we're at time wise.
Yeah, it's not, it's not up there. We got about thirty seconds.
Oh, good. I, I can be fast. I'd like to, uh, I'm willing to donate some money to, um, have a thorough review and start at the inception of the solar panels that were just allowed to have happen in this area. Most assuredly, everyone would be comfortable. I think a long-term study would be warranted. This would be a great class project to be carried on from class to class over at the high school. They could test the water, the air, the land for various contaminants and/or radiation. I am willing to advance some of that money. I will speak over there. And I'm certain everyone who passed it would be enthused and wanting to make sure it's safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, next on our agenda is the approval of city council minutes for February twenty-second regular meeting. I'll take a motion on those.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. We have consent agenda items. Um, again, items, uh, I, item I we added, so items A through I. Take a motion on those.
I would like to poll F, if I could, just had a couple of questions on F.
Pulling item F, any others? Seeing none, uh, I'll make a motion to approve items A through I with the exception of F, as in Frank. Is there a second? Motion second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those, um, in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Jed, item F?
Yeah, just a quick question. I know there's a large range. Obviously, we're looking at fourteen thousand nine hundred, um, all the way up to a larger dollar amount. Could you just walk us through like how that would, would that come back to council, would that not come back to council? So I didn't have time to get that back to you today, so.
Yeah, John, do you want to try to, this is in regards to the chemicals?
Yeah, so when we pur- when we purchased the mill property, we inherited a couple Conex containers that were locked and we didn't have access to them until we purchased it. I was probably pretty sure what was in there, but I didn't know the extent of what was in there. It was all the things they couldn't get rid of, of course. So we brought in one company out of the metro area to come and do an inventory. Some of the stuff isn't labeled, that is the problem. There's some fifty-five gallon drums of some materials that's not labeled. Um, there is like fifty-one gallon containers of acid in glass bottles. So that has to be packaged and hauled out. So the wide variation and, and so we had the one price and that's the price we're looking at. And then, uh, Rob thought, well, let's try to get another price. So I met with another company out there and they came with that second price and it was, you know, there's a little bit of unknown. I went back to the original people. I talked to them and I said, you know, how much variation is there here, you know? Because it could have been, it's pretty extreme. And he didn't feel there was that much. He, he, he didn't see it a huge, you know, plus or minus of where we're at. The, the amounts there's, that are in the quotes are pretty high, I believe. I think the amounts aren't that high once they start packaging. So it's, yeah. There was quite of a, a distance between the two. It was an eye opener, so. So I did make the second call and do my due diligence to try to, you know, rein in to make sure that price was still good and what, you know, is everything right? He assured me there might be, you know, on the, the materials, some variations, but there shouldn't be a lot, he said.
And would that come back to us for change or like, hey, would this, you know, is there, is there a sliding scale within that contract or?
There was not. I mean, there is not. I just, I don't know what other direction to go with it, you know? It, it's there, it's ours, it's, you know, what are we going to do with it? And, you know, we, we went due dili- due diligence to get a second quote, but I don't know what else we can do unless somebody has a suggestion. I mean, we're certainly willing to work with anybody, but I just don't know what other direction to go.
Yeah, I just was more curious on, could that lower number turn into the bigger number bec- you know? And, and how would that, what would that process look like?
Yeah.
We own it, we got to deal with it for sure.
And we, we all had the same exact thoughts and that's why I made a second phone call to this gentleman. And he, he said it could, but it isn't going to be extreme. There is no guarantees, you know, that's.
And from a staff perspective, there's, um, there's ability for them to approve up to a certain threshold. And so should it slightly go over, we've got a process in place that can allow that from that.
We dealt with everything we could. I mean, we took the Florence and bulbs and we took all that. We took everything we could out of there, you know, as staff that we felt comfortable that we could deal with. And so we, you know, the old oil and stuff, we, we, we cleaned all that out. It's just the stuff that we can't deal with safely.
And I'll just add to that, um, just for council perspective. So we have this trailer with these chemicals and, and items that we have these two bids on, but then we also were able to sell a transformer that was left on the site. So our goal has been to have it be a wash of those two items. I think the transformer was like seventeen thousand, um, and so the, we're hoping that we can sell the one, pay for the other and dispose of both and have a clean site. Um, and so that's kind of been the number in, in Rob's mind all along is just stay under that transformer amount. Um, so hopefully this, the fourteen thousand dollar is closer to the range that we would like to see. Um, but anything above, if it were to change by anything over twenty-five thousand dollars to Ryan's point, would have to come back. So, um, hopefully we don't see that much variation on that lower quote.
I would make a motion to approve F.
Motion to approve F as presented. Is there a second? Motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Council, we have one public hearing tonight on ordinance amendments.
All right, mayor, members of the council. I'm going to give this presentation from here while I'm trying to run the recording and the computer at the same time. So bear with me. We've already gone through this at a workshop level, but this is the actual formal public hearing that's required for uh, the, the review of our full city code, which you might recall was a twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three strategic initiative for us was to go through the full code and make sure it's updated, appropriate terminology. If there's items that need to be, um, addressed or changed, let's get them done in one. So I'll swoop and approve it as one instead of coming back with repetitive, random ordinance changes throughout the year. Uh, and so that is what this is. We've gone through each of these titles originally. I'm just going to go through them again, um, for public awareness of the items that changed in here, most of which is, is terminology and typing and formatting. So, under the, um, first general area of what we reserve, what we changed across the board, uh, there were multiple areas that were reserved sections, which are usually sections that existed as ordinances at one point in time. And then for whatever reason they became outdated, they removed them and they reserved the section. And so we just cleaned those up, um, got rid of those to have it be a more succinct, uh, numbering system. We, um, like I mentioned, we went through overall formatting changes to make sure that all the formatting in every single code matched. We also updated the table of contents to match each of those, um, sections to. So we were required to have a public hearing to approve the full city, city code, um, and we'll go through each title. Title one, general provisions, mostly formatting changes, um, minor changes in some of the content, which is in your packets to match current processes. And then we did add that chapter five code of ethics. Most city codes have this, ours did not. Um, but also based on what we reviewed in workshop and what you're reviewing in front of you tonight, it is different. What we reviewed in workshop was a significantly more restrictive and aggressive policy. We matched it to our policy governance work that we've been doing in our own, um, city council governance process. So it's almost an exact replica to that to have consistency and to be a little less, um, aggressive in that policy approach. And so I'll, I think I'll pause after this, or do you want to take questions after the public hearing?
Maybe let's do the public hearing and we'll have discussion.
Title two, um, boards and commissions, again, formatting, minor changes to match our current processes. One of the bigger items that we changed in here was, um, we did keep the term limits and a process for those to come back if they would like to seek reappointment, they can, but to go through the actual formal application process, just so we can see if there is other interest out there um, and, and make sure that it's a fair competitive process after they reach their term limit. Title three, business and license regulations, uh, primarily formatting again, minor changes. We removed some reserved chapters, which were in there for amusements and food vending machines, um, and are no longer applicable. Many of the clerk treasurer duties are actually, uh, completed by our deputy clerk. Uh, and then we adjusted any of our applicable licensing processes, which are mostly online now and not, uh, formal manual processes. Title four, public health and safety, again, formatting and changes to the process. Removed one reserved chapter that was reserved, but nobody could quite determine, uh, what it was reserved in there for. So we just, um, bumped everything up at a chapter level. We added language to address buried propane tanks, um, private residences. Uh, we revised any of the community development director from where it was clerk treasurer where applicable, revised wording to the fire chief instead of the city administrator for any fire-related permits. And then, um, updated our, any of our verbiage around the actual permitting process, which is again, um, online instead of referencing paper permits. And then a new state legislation around native grass language that was required to be added. Title five, police regulations, um, formatting, minor changes of the processes, updated any state statutes that have changed, removed some reserved chapters around fishing below the dams. Uh, and I think there was one for docks that was in there. We added chickens to the domestic animal definition. Yep. We included social media, text messages, emails, and any other online messaging to forms of communication where threats can be investigated. We did not revise the curfew language. Um, after thorough discussions from our police department, we did leave that the same. Title six, motor vehicles and traffic. Uh, again, primarily formatting changes, minor, minor changes of the current processes and state statutes, removed chapter three regarding bicycles, um, as that is now under, covered under state statute, no longer applicable under city code. We edited the restricted parking language, no longer allowing parking in front of mailboxes, modified language for posting no parking areas, modified residential truck parking restrictions and clarifying when it, where it is involved or allowed and not allowed and it matches the Saint Cloud ordinance. We did not change the seventy-two hour parking after thorough discussions. I think we talked about that in the, um, workshop as well, that, uh, we, we think we have that as solidified as we possibly can, um, knowing that there's, there could be some levels of taking advantage of that, but it's nearly impossible to have an ordinance that completely eradicates it. Title seven, public waste and properties. Um, we removed chapter four regarding baseball fields as it's not in recommended ordinance, ordinance format. That would be more on a policy level or a park plan. Chapter six regarding private docks was removed. That is a rever- reserved chapter as well. Anything, uh, was, all of those docks were moved as a part of the Conning Road one project. So no longer required in city code. And that would be for, um, residential, non-city properties. So that wouldn't include if you have a city park that has like a pier or dock on it. Updated the right-of-way application process to match what we actually do. Um, our, updated the parks chapter to match the parks master plan and park shelter rental policy. And then updated the cemetery chapter to the deputy clerk from the clerk treasurer to match our current process. Title eight, water and sewer, mostly terminology and formatting in this one. Title nine, um, same thing, mostly formatting and remove some repetitive language that we had in there that was already written in title four of the city code. Title ten around zoning, a bunch of formatting in this one, remove some reserved chapters. We did leave a few spots for reserved chapters in this one specifically, knowing that we likely will have more zoning, um, chapters related to the Mill District or any future zoning districts. Added the sacred community definition, which is a requirement of the state legislature approved in twenty twenty-three. Updated all of our terminology to match our actual zoning districts. Added language addressing civil action and legal fees, um, to be paid by the property owner when we're having to, uh, get involved in civil action primarily between neighbors. Added verbiage around the public works director being able to install snow fencing, otherwise generally does not allowed, um, due to the material. Updated the solar ordinance to include the hundred and twenty-five percent financial insurance requirement for decommissioning. Final amount would be set by the council, but, and it could be more, but not less. We did not include any language around the city being exempt from the, um, ten megawatt limit of solar throughout the whole community. We added language regarding screening, um, an excessive amount of perimeter utilities in R one districts. And then S E H updated the wetland chapter to reflect current requirements and/or definitions. Carrie did add here, um, just a brief description of the sacred community legislation that was recently passed and what we're required to follow as a part of that new legislation. So our code matches this new requirement from the legislative session in twenty twenty-three. Basically sets minimum standards, uh, for settlements as shown. And it would re, would be quite, require us to follow a conditional use process. Title eleven, subdivision regulations, mostly formatting and language, updated our process. We had recently just gone through this in twenty twenty-two, so most of it is up to date. One item that we did change is a requirement for a tree in each front yard. And you can see Carrie's description there. It's one of the biggest items that we see as outstanding lists for, uh, residential properties and, and properties in general. And typically we see the developer and the property owner agree that they don't necessarily want that tree. And then we have to enforce it because of our ordinances, so just cleaning up that, um, specific area and requirement. Title twelve, twelve, uh, flood control, formatting, language changes, terminology, uh, mostly, most of this is state requirements. There's not a ton of room for us from our revision standpoint. So with that, that's the twelve titles of our code, all the changes being recommended. Uh, we can open public hearing, allow public comment, close public hearing, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council, before we open the public hearing, are there any quick, uh, clarification questions at all? Seeing none. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to testify on the ordinance revision, please step forward. Second call, anyone wishing to testify? Seeing no one here. Third and final call, anyone wishing to testify on the ordinance revisions? We will close the public hearing. Council. Other questions or discussion? It was five hundred and twenty-seven pages.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Um, a couple that I'll start out with. Title six, chapter two, which is restricted parking. Uh, it's where we added in the truck parking. One of the, uh, challenges I can anticipate there by the wording that's in there now is we've got a number of bus drivers that throughout the day will drive bus in the morning, park at home or on a side street near their home, which is usually the safest. Um, and then run their route in the afternoon and then go put it back in the shed. Under this rule, we would not allow them to park that, which might hinder. Now, if they're causing a traffic concern, I can absolutely see that being a problem. Also in the wording, we include, you know, um, tractor trailer or larger truck, and I can understand that too. I guess my question back on this is, could we restrict it to no overnight parking? And would that satisfy our, satisfy the concern that might be there?
Probably would. Maybe for the redemption of your school bus, obviously. By the way, I don't think anyone's gonna write a ticket to your school bus, but nonetheless, I would, in my normal routine, these would probably satisfy.
Because today I see the only option your officers have, uh, unless it's a public, immediate public safety, your only off, option you have is a seventy-two hour. That can become quite a nuisance, I would anticipate. Um, and so I do like the additional restriction on it, but, and I agree, like, who's going to write the ticket to the bus operator? But there's enough neighborly feuds that happen that we also don't. But there's enough neighborly feuds that happen that we also don't need your officers getting called every single day um because of a new code we put in, but. Noodle on that one. Chapter five within the same title, which is about golf carts, uh no changes planned on this. This was our, we've, we brought it forward once and it was two years ago. Um there's a number that transcend Pine Cone Road. Again, I think if it's safe, your officers are probably making a discretionary decision. I'm not proposing we make any changes now, but I would ask, hey, can we review that to make sure that as, I mean, it seems like golf carts are becoming more and more popular in our community and that our ordinance is matching what our expectations are. If they've changed, we've changed over personnel since that first came out too, so.
And then I think also the side by sides, is that something that?
Yep.
Are we addressed or?
As we know, we can, uh we only have control over the city roadways, it's a long, easy highway, there's different state laws and then we play in super seat. But uh what we can still, you know, we can affirm certain things as far as long-term city roadways, which I don't really think the option would be against. Uh so we, it's not an issue that we, like, it's, we're gonna have all the.
That is a frequent, side by sides is a frequent question.
They, they come up to fuel, you know, at holiday or whatever, and um wherever they then turn around and go back out to. I've, not very many at all, but I, I don't.
As long as they're driving respectfully, the officers do, are being pretty much discretionless, they're not gonna give citations for being, if you're being respectful or whatever.
Right.
Title three, chapter fourteen, and others, you and counsel may have gotten some recent questions on this. This relates to the cannabinoid products. We've taken a run at this multiple times now, feels like. The question that was posed to me uh over the weekend was, hey, does Sartell allow? Um I'm gonna get the wording wrong, but chewables and liquid form at a liquor store? Because we have some liquor stores or grocery stores in town that are selling them and others that are pulling back saying, hey, there's gray area in the language. Being we're going through this now, it might be a time for us to bring clarity.
Pretty sure the opposite state statute.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So my understanding is that the, the um non-liquor store, smoke shop type shops could hi, could have only the chewables and the liquor stores could have only the liquor. Um and that there couldn't be crossover of those products. And I, I remember us having discussion of trying to make sure that we're allowing business operations of each one. Um now, we are continuously waiting for guidance on. I, I suspect that that will probably change when the state comes out in twenty twenty-five with their guidance, um.
But is state statute restricting us from allowing chewables in a liquor store?
It's edibles.
Edible, sorry. Aren't they all edible?
At worst, it'd be worse as a city. I can't, I wish Carrie was here, she would know.
Yeah. We are, we are trying to allow the businesses to be in their respective lanes, per se.
And the debate or the discussion that that happened that night, I recall, is, cause we had a representative from one of the stores here. And across the street from them was a tobacco shop that only sells tobacco.
Yep.
But if I go to their liquor store, I can buy liquor and at the counter I can also buy tobacco. And so it was like, hey, why are we restricting one versus the other?
Can we pull our restrictions, I can't remember if that means they can now can do that or, but it doesn't match whatever state statute is not. We have the least restricted possible.
Yeah, and it may make sense, you know, given some of these, I'm just making notes here of PD review of, well frankly, all of these items that we've discussed already. It might make sense for us to, for you to be able to take it back with your team.
Yeah.
Make sure that we don't wanna make any final edits before we actually, we could table this for one extra meeting.
Yep.
Um.
I wanna make sure we got.
We get it right, exactly.
Get the public hearing done.
We got the, yep.
Procedurally, we'd be able to come back and, and now approve.
And have it as an old business item, but I think there, they actually, just this last weekend, I noticed that they're coming out, which will have an impact on our ordinances on temporary licensure for social equity applications for um cannabis operations at the state level, which will be earlier than twenty twenty-five. And so we likely will need to get ahead of that as well. So it probably makes sense with all of these things that we keep, let's just keep going through on these questions. And then the PD team, you know, golf, let's make a double check of golf carts, side by sides, that truck parking, if we wanna put an exemption in there. And then double checking that um cannabis, especially with the new legislation that is supposed to be coming out around the early process for social equity applicants. So I've got those noted.
Okay. Um one other, then I'll, I'll pause. Um title eleven, chapter six, and you hit on it with the tree in yard. That had, that's been debated at length um for a number of years. I don't believe it's over burdensome. Um and what really drove it was developers coming in and clear cutting an entire swath and then putting up nothing but homes on it with no additional landscape, no tree. And so it was done with the intent that there's plantings there, there's trees there, so that it's not just asphalt curb home. I'd love to, I'd love for us to s, keep it in, but find a way to be flexible within it rather than. So my, my approach is to start with, it is the expectation, but allow staff the ability to back that off under certain circumstances. Ie, they selectively keep trees that are on the parcel already versus clear cut everything. We could say, hey, there's a net value of you being thoughtful there versus clearing everything and then planting a sapling. I, I would also agree, that's not the intent.
April, do you wanna speak to this at all? If I recall correctly, I think that is what the intent of this is, is that it would place it within the development agreement, but have more flexibility. So basically, lead with it being the desired requirement, but specifically call it out in the development agreement if it's gonna be required to be planted in front yard or not.
I, I'm actually not familiar with this change. I wish Carrie was here too, it wasn't one that we reviewed.
Okay, so I, I think that's one that we can just double check with her. I'm almost certain that it's um to be placed within the development agreement instead of a hard stop at the ordinance level, um.
And again, within development agreement, we would, we would have the ability to override the ordinance.
Exactly.
Putting staff in a position where, hey, this is the expectation, but you could essentially negotiate out of it based on circumstances.
Yep, exactly. So I, I'll note that one too, just to make one hundred percent certain that before we, we'll review that on the development side and then the items on the PD side, just to make sure that we have this exactly how we want it before we make any approvals.
Counsel, are there others that people wanna review?
Just a question for PD, the discussion around the curfew hours, can you could just give some background for public awareness on that one? I know there's some chatter online about that.
Yeah, we decided mostly to keep it as is because people are used to it in our city. And the Saint Cloud one, although we kinda wanted to try to move in a direction where regionally were similar. It was different hours on certain nights and weekends had different, and it was really complex for uh the PD to decipher, like, oh, can we just try it? And I can say I'm a little later. The current one, it seems like most of them are aware of it when we're dealing with juveniles. Uh we didn't wanna tax it altogether, uh because all the curfew violations aren't, aren't looking right to get through the violations. They are, give us legal precedent to make contact, because some kids that may be out, check in on them. Uh we have, just keeping that legal precedent to make that stop is kind of why we decided.
We had some discussion about the curfew and late night activity or school activities or something, and the kids were not being able to. We've changed that, that was a couple of.
Yeah, so the, the Saint Cloud ordinance, the planning commission actually talked about this one in depth, and I, Carrie just has a couple of notes here. And to um Chief's point of, theirs is based off of different age groups, like fourteen, sixteen, eighteen. And then you do run into some of these school event items, and now all of a sudden, they're actually not allowed to be at an event that they're supposed to be participating in.
Correct.
And so we put it all on one level and made it clear to understand more succinct. Um it is a little different than what Saint Cloud does, but also administratively, we are a smaller department and, and inherently smaller city that has different needs for juveniles, so.
I would agree with Chief on the fact that it's, it's us able to make contact with juvenile.
Yep.
And have the precedents to, to check in.
All right, I have just a couple more. Um title two, chapter one, two, and three, which is our commissions. There's some wording change there, um. And, and I don't know if, if I just got tripped up on some of the wording, but the way I read it today is um if someone's appointed to one of the board's commissions, uh they have the ability to have three terms, three years each. And so once you're appointed, you stay on for nine years unless you raise your hand to say you wanna get off. How it's been applied um in the past was that each, at the end of each term, at the end of three years, you would apply again. And I think we've had some discussion that anyone that's applying again would have a upper hand because they have the knowledge and the history of it. Um I, I have reservations of someone being on for nine years without.
Reapplying.
I don't wanna say checks and balances, but without reapplying.
So our, our previous term limits were the nine years. We added the piece that they, at the end of that have to, it's just not an automatic renewal. But we could add it so where you're doing that reapplication at the end of every term, not at the end of the term limit, i- is I think what you're getting after is. After the end of every term, reapply.
And I think we can make it less confusing and take out term limit.
Yeah, you really don't.
Simply going to apply.
Yep.
The council at that time would have the discretion to say, you've been on for five terms and there's other great candidates. They would have that discretion.
Yep.
Um so we could simply limit it if council desires to simply say a three-year term and apply after each.
Yep. Yeah, and we are seeing, I mean, depending on the commission, but frankly, we're, I mean, park commission, we had a dozen applications. We, everything Sartell's, I mean, so we're seeing people that are interested, and so you hate to deter people from applying just because somebody's got a nine-year term limit. Um.
It's a long time.
That is a long time, yeah, and it, we're, we never wanna turn around, turn away people that might be interested in, in trying to serve, so.
Yeah, I think through those interviews, you can find people that um could serve in other capacities.
Yeah, yep, we did in multiple ones, so I, I think that's a good suggestion that we can bring back.
And then the last one is the title one, chapter five, um we did strip that down a lot more from where it's at. Still a, a ton of reservations about it. The interest aspect to what that might mean or doesn't mean, there's a, a prohibition of special treatment. The way I'm reading that is if any of us meet with a constituent one-on-one, that we are violating that ordinance. Because the prohibition of special treatment says that you cannot offer, one, something that the masses aren't offered, right? And so again, I think some of this language, we really need to clean up to make sure that we're getting to the um focal point of what we're trying to guide. I, I think to some of your other comments on other areas, I, I would also question whether this should be in our ordinance or not. Because at the end of it, and as we talk through policy governance, the only thing that could happen if someone were to violate that as an elected official is a public censure. All other codes, there's actual legal recourse. This one is, hey, we'd encourage you to step down, but, and so I feel like that might make more sense in a governance document. Or a place more specific, specifically reserved for council. And then we're tonight's night three of our learning, and I also would feel like, hey, this is super early to, to try and apply some of what we're learning into city code, city ordinance. Like, I feel like we need to get through and figure this uh, figure this out in the model we wanna go with before we add that in.
Yeah, I think if you guys wanna chat that through tonight, we've got training after this. Um I, I would encourage, I'd say ninety-five percent of cities have a code of ethics in their city code. It's very standard, it's um, it is the, the public being able to have some accountability to their council members. Um to be able to say, if you don't follow this, this is what our expectation would be. Yep, it is just a public censure, but it's at least an acknowledgement. Um and so I think it's, it's showing to your constituents that, hey, we're gonna hold ourselves to this standard, and it's in our code. And, you know, I know in, one of the items that we've talked about with policy governance is how do we pass this on from council to council to council? Your ordinance is a, is the best way to do that, because it is, you, it requires your full council to change an ordinance. Um now, whether you want that language to be, i- if, right now, it's an exact copy of your um, your governance process policy that, that we've gone through. If we want to adjust those, I think it would make sense for them to be consistent in both documents. Um but we could meet after, and I think, and we're gonna table these either way. And so if you guys have some recommendations on some language to make edits to that, uh to certain areas that are, we're maybe struggling with the, the verbiage of it. I think let's chat about it after this meeting, and we can make those edits there and then also make them over in the ordinance side so that there is that consistency. Otherwise, you've got council members that are held to a policy that's different than what they're held to in the code, which does make it challenging. But I, I think that's probably a good conversation for a meeting after this.
And that's all I have. Counsel, any other comments? Otherwise, I would look for a, uh actually, I will make a motion to table.
Yep.
Uh the ordinance amendments. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, uh any discussion? Again, the intent of tabling it tonight is to review some of the uh, the items that we've talked about. Uh procedurally, we've already completed the public hearing, so we'd be able to bring it back under old business, have any additional discussion, and then pass it at that time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Uh we have no old business, no new business, we'll move on to department reports, administration.
Yeah, mayor, members of the council, I'll take mine and I'll take Rob's. So if you have any questions on mine or the finance monthly report, I'd be happy to help answer.
Any questions for admin or finance? Seeing none, thank you. Police?
Mayor, members of the council, you have my report, let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions for PD?
Just a quick mention, not, not question. Um on Facebook, there are a lot of neighborhood groups, and I used to live in a neighborhood that has a, the Celebration Neighborhood has a pretty active um neighborhood page. They're just mentioned, and I'm just make, bringing this up for awareness, mentioning that there's a lot of speeding happening in the neighborhood and people are really concerned, so I'm just bringing it to your awareness.
Yeah, I think I'd seen that one and a couple others, and it's a, it's always a good reminder, if you have constituents talking, to call like when it's happening. I read through some of them too, and there's a specific truck, and it's like, okay, well, I can't find that truck six days later, but I can find it if you call uh right now. It is a, it is maybe a, a nice marker that the condition of growing into a bigger city like we are doing oftentimes leaves neighborhoods feeling like they don't get the same attention they maybe got fifteen years ago. Um and as we look at staffing and the PD, to, to think about those things, and like those neighborhoods may not know that we go down to one PD or officer at some certain times of the night, and how are we supposed to cover those every, you know, so it's just nice educational pieces for them. And thank you for the awareness and make sure we uh, we take, hopefully, if you see again constituents, like, tell them to call us when it's happening, when they can, but still uh doing some extra patrol over there would be good, so.
Thank you, we'll do that.
Any other questions for PD? Thank you, sir. Fire?
Mayor, members of council, in front of you have the monthly report for fire. Uh don't have anything really to add in uh before opening up to questions, just wanted to take a moment to thank John um for all he did for the city. Coming in as fire chief here, one of the, one of the neatest things I saw coming from the past city. We should, where we shovel our own sidewalks. We should, where we shovel our own sidewalks, hung everything on the wall, we did a lot of our own repairs. One of the first things John told me was we're full service, if you need anything, let us, let us know. And he stuck to that the whole time. If there wasn't a little detail that ever got missed, if you asked him once, it got done. So I just wanted to publicly thank John and uh also uh say we're missing across from you at these council meetings.
Any questions for fire? Thank you. Sorry, that was totally out of order. Public works. I'm looking this direction and just, I went with it. Public works.
Good evening, mayor, members of council, you have our report. Any questions, be happy to answer. Um, just thank you, everybody. Thank you to past staff, past councils, past mayors and the community for the time I had here. So thank you, everybody, for everything that was given to me. I, I appreciate everything. Thank you.
Any questions for John?
Yeah, I have one question. We used to get candy up here on a regular basis. Um, I'm wondering if we could potentially keep that up, maybe if you could arrange a candy drop occasionally.
You know, there's a retirement budget.
Thank you.
Um, I got an email yesterday, uh late last night, looks like. Um, two questions, one on parking restrictions. Since we haven't had snow and maybe not sure where we anticipate, but parking restrictions, um cancelling them early?
We have decided, we have not been enforcing them uh for quite some time now. We didn't really come out publicly and say that because there is a cons- like Stock Rapids, they kept doing it. Uh, mostly out of a consistency thing, like if we stop, then one, so we were doing it early on and we're getting some pretty unhappy people in their lobby with uh tickets, but also we were trying to get
I think we've heard from a few.
I'm sure you did. Uh, but we suspended it a while back as far as enforcement on it goes, just because of the crazy year we were having, so.
So it, in an intent to not, I don't wanna like I don't want any of us to respond to say, hey, we're not cancelling it, but we're not gonna enforce it, right? Cause that also goes against exactly what you just said. When is it up? Is it up at the end of March or end of April? And I guess the other strategy is if we came out publicly saying it's cancelled, we also do reserve the right and some other cities just call a snow, snow emergency if and when there is one.
Yeah, it's, I guess that would kinda be up to you guys as a council if we, we, I could see either way. Uh, we didn't wanna announce it and then have that March storm come through and, and be in a big mess and, and have to do it, but common sense should come to play a little bit here as well, that uh there's sixteen inches of snow on the ground in two days, we need you to move your car.
Um, it, it's made more complicated that this is our only meeting in March. I don't know, I'll.
I think the called snow emergency would work.
Leaning on staff to give us direction that and we don't need it tonight. I mean, that's, I think it's.
Are you guys still getting, quite a few calls on it or?
I got an email, I've heard from a, a number of residents that have had tickets and they're like, we haven't had snow since. But they also recognize, hey, we may get a significant snowstorm yet in March or even April that
Around April, around April fifth, I think.
It's usually around the masters.
Uh, I, I can talk to CSO and staff a little bit too, but I'm certainly in favor of, of letting everyone know it's like, it's over. But if we cause snow emergency, uh parking restrictions are on too.
I know, um, I, I don't know if it's WJON or someone who just put an article, they had con- contacted Nikki and she connected with um Lieutenant Mater or Captain Mater to talk about what the intent was. So I, I think that probably didn't help things either, cause they're doing articles about what other cities are doing and other cities are removing their restrictions. Um, at the time Mater had said we were not. And so I think whatever, whatever PD's call is, I think we'll support, but it, it sounds like there's generally support from the council standpoint to take the approach of some, you know, a snow emergency twenty-four hour versus keeping the full ordinance in effect.
Especially during spring break when kids are home.
Uh, and then the last one, and I, I very comfortable in saying no, but they're asking if the compost is opening earlier based on the season.
Him ask that on his way in today.
Uh, it's normally open on the second weekend, but we, we've talked about it. I think the gates got put on today, so we got a little bit of work to do out there. I talked to my operator this morning. So we'll see how much we get done here if we don't get any rain.
Tell them, stay tuned.
Stay tuned.
Um, that is all I, all I have for public works. Again, thank you, John, for everything.
Thank you.
Uh, community development.
Yeah, I should've added that one tonight, Nick. That's the other hat I'm wearing tonight along with IT. So if you have any questions, um, be happy to attempt to answer them.
Any questions for pub- uh, community development? Thank you. Uh, commission updates, any?
Nope, none at this time.
City council committee updates, miscellaneous business, Tim?
Um, nope, just thanks again to John and happy retirement.
Jill?
Yeah, thanks to John and we're remiss here because we shall also be thanking Leanne for supporting John all these years and, and allowing him to take calls, I'm sure, at all times of the evening and come in and
Now you will be nervous.
So, thank you.
Alex?
Yep, thanks again, John, and good luck.
I don't have anything further. Look for a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? We're adjourned.